...call, we've got everybody except Mark.
Mark, you say today, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to the organization of the board and the election of the officers. So I'm gonna ask for nominations for Board Chair.
Nominate Dave Johnson.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I nominate Bruce Vanderpool.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed, have we?
One more, as long as you do it three times.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay. If there are no for the nominations, nominations are closed. And I think we, all those in favor of Bruce Vanderpool?
It doesn't have to be a roll call, but you do need to have a hand or an individual roll call, either one would just hire.
Okay, we'll call a roll. All those in favor of Bruce Vanderpool, Linda?
Kala? Do we just wanna call on the person?
Yeah, I would just say call on the person so they can say...
Don't let them make the choice.
They can make the choice, not really going to quote Bruce Vanderpool.
Okay. Deb?
Bruce.
Dave?
I'll go for first.
Dave.
Bruce.
(laughing).
Well, I mean...
Bruce.
Okay, so Bruce has four to a favor of Bruce, so Bruce, you can take your time.
I think that does change, so if you try to be the easiest, I don't know if you wanna change.
Immediately or does he finish this?
No, I think the moment you're like, you are the Chair.
Somebody needs us to promptly prove this thing.
Sure, I think for the, yup, for the next ones, Bruce, it would be done the same way as we did for the Chair. It'd be opening up nominations for the Vice Chair, the Treasurer, and the Clerk in exactly the same way. Three motions, two check, get nominations, then you can close the nominations and a vote is done the same way.
Okay, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Deb.
Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair? Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair? Then we'll close the nominations and go on hand.
I think because there are no other nominations, you can congratulate Deb for...
Declare.
Declare, thank you.
Okay.
Correct word, you can declare Deb the winner.
That's the Vice Chair. Next then, do we have any nominations for Treasurer?
And just so the Board is aware, Mark was, I did ask him that question, and he has no issues with whatever the Board's desire is.
Do we have any nominations for Treasurer? I suppose I should say any other nomination for Treasurer. Do we have any other nominations for Treasurer? If no additional nominations, we, Mark will be our Treasurer.
Close nominations.
Close the nominations, okay, we close the nominations. And we declare Mark Dingwin Treasurer for 2014. Okay, any nominations for Clerk? We have Lou nominated. Any nominations, any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? And we'll close our nominations and Bruce Torcamp is our Clerk for 2014. Congratulations, everybody. So, I'm not prepared. David, you can guide me, I get too far away, right? Any additions to the agenda?
Chair, there were two additions to the agenda plus a correction on the agenda itself. If you look at, under Personnel, I do apologize to the Board, forgot to put a one there, under Review and Consider Approval of Extension of Hours. So that should be number one. And then Review and Consider Approval for Fitness, that would be number two. And then the two additions would be number three and number four to Personnel.
Okay. So, we can just move on, or do we?
Just accept a motion to accept.
Do we have a motion to accept the changes to the agenda? Motion by Cheryl, seconded by Lou. All in favor, say aye. All, same sign. Motion be asked. We have the agenda in front of us now, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Move by Deb, seconded by...
You just did that, when you accepted the changes to the agenda, that's all usually one motion.
One motion?
So, yeah, you accepted the agenda, but with the additions.
Okay. District is proud of.
There are no problems today, so you're off the hook for that.
Wow. That's probably a good thing, maybe. Do we have any public comment from anybody?
I do have a question, maybe I need to do this in a way, but I have a proposal for an event, a trip next year. I don't know if that can be done this meeting or a future meeting, but...
I think with the agenda being accepted, what is your timeline there for the trip?
This is something for next year.
Is this an additional trip besides attaching yourself to the choir trip?
No, this is the attaching.
Attaching, I would say contact me, again, it's up to the desire of the Board, you could certainly, but you've already adopted the agenda. So my feeling would be that you just contact me, and I'll make sure that that gets on the agenda for the next board meeting.
I think the separation there probably is staff compared, because technically we won't get rid of this public comment at some point in time when I'm gonna put you off.
No, it's, it was brought to my attention, what is, what Darren is kind of talking about is that there's already a pre-approved trip for next year for the choir. The band would really like to take along with that, and they're just going to come to the Board and ask for permission so that we can include the band personnel into our choir trip. It is an addition, you've already approved the trip, but it was really kind of the choir trip, so it's really coming before the Board and saying, you know, the band would like to go. So it's really a desire, because you've approved the trip already, it just would be with an addition. It seems to me that, I don't think there's any agree on this one, so it's the Board's desire, you could certainly put it on the next agenda.
Comments? Go ahead and just see what on the agenda.
Yep, next agenda.
Thank you. Review, Consider Approval of the minutes from the December 17th, 2013 Regular Board Meeting. Motion by Deb, seconded by Lou. Any further discussion? We have, I think we have discussion always?
Yeah, I think it's always good to ask for a discussion or not.
For discussion, all in favor, signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes approved as printed. Financial reports. We have the 2013 Treasurer's Report. Oh, okay, and the 2000, thank you very much. 2013 Monthly Balance Sheet.
We had listed on your not sufficient fund checks. There was debit with that.
Yeah, I would have to check and see exactly what that one was about, so...
My guess would be that one.
Somebody paid, somebody paid a check by check, and when we tried to cash it, that's what it would be, exactly what it was, I'd have to check on, but that's what that would be.
So that would come out of our fund? Well, because they paid it to us, but they didn't have money in their account, so what Joan does is continue to contact the financial institution once they find their account, and then she cashes the check and then it'll come back in.
But I would tell the Board that sometimes that can be quite an addition. So, but yes, that's what that would be, I just don't know exactly what it would be for.
Do we have a motion to approve the report? Motion by David to approve the report, Treasurer's Report, the monthly balance sheet, second. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So, financial reports accepted. And then, audit approval of bills, now this could be a little bit different because our Treasurer is not here, but we all have a list, right?
You all have a list, no, he did not, but in fairness, he wasn't very, he wasn't very good and did not make it in. So he was not able to sit down and go over every bill like he normally would. There's nothing that I see unusual, but it's really up to the desire of the Board. You can certainly ask Mark to come in and check those, you know, when he comes, when he comes in, whether you want to prove no or not, but I certainly don't see it.
Well, it is, but it's appropriate for us to approve it.
Yes, I would say, so and again, I could certainly talk with Mark and have him, when he checks the next buildings, to make sure that he looks at these in addition.
Motion by David to approve the bills. Do we have a second? Second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, accepted the bills for December 13th, or December 2013 and January 2014. Okay, Consent Agenda. Review and Consider Approval of Non-Athletic Assignments for the 2013-14 School Year. Middle School, Three Act Play, Maria Rasmussen.
This is just one of the ones, we did not have a producer or director at that particular time for this, when we had all of the remainder of, or the original, non-athletic assignments, so this is by contract, we do it, she is willing to do that, so certainly, I think, very modified, very willing.
We have a motion by Kala. Second?
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signal by, are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Business. Here presentation from Brian Thompson from Garland Roofing, so I'm guessing we're up here.
Yeah, why would it just move?
Mr. Board Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Hewitt, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate the invite to come in and address you and give you kind of a recap of some roofing conditions and some recent inspections that we've done. My name is Brian Thompson, this is Troy Thompson, we're both with the Garland Company. I don't often admit it, but yes, we are related, if you should want to, so, Mother would appreciate that, so. We have enjoyed nearly a 10-year relationship with the Payneville Public Schools. We started in, our inspection services in late 2004, early 2005, and that led to several roof replacement projects throughout the years. And so tonight, we're gonna kind of recap where we had sort of started from back at that time, and kind of move you through, just do a quick review of a few of the projects that we've done, and kind of what's leading and what's ahead of you as you move down the road in terms of needs regarding roofs in the district. So, we're gonna make this as concise as possible, as quick as possible, and by all means, stop me and ask any questions along the way, if anything jumps out at you, so. Okay, we're gonna review our original 2005 inspection data. We did, we've done three roof replacement projects thus far. '06, here at the high school, '08 was the elementary gymnasium, that was the white steel roof that's on the gymnasium now. And then 2009, we did a combination, that was the larger project that the district did, that was a combination of both facilities in one joint project. And then 2010, we were asked, and again, in 2010, to update what would be moving forward from this point forward, the map you folks have in front of you now, was that dated at the bottom, stated 2010. So that was our recommended schedule and budgets as of 2010, at that time. So I simply just reprinted what we had issued the district in 10, 2010, okay? And then we, along with Donnie, we did inspections on the district here this fall, and so we're gonna give you kind of a pictorial, kind of walk through what we found during that inspection, and then, or even the budget summary one more time, so, okay.
So, this is a reprint of 2010?
2010's budget analysis that we provided in 2010, we've not updated...
Yes, print is current.
The print is current, but it is the exact duplicate of what was delivered, our last budget that we provided in 2010, yes.
So we're four years later.
You're four years later.
And like where it says, five to seven years, does that mean that now is moved to four?
So, so, for example, yes, it is, so in 2010, for example, the failed area that we told you one to two years, back in 2010, we informed the district that you had about one to two years of serviceable life left on those roof sections at that time. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So all the rest of them, we should kind of consider them...
They're old.
You're being extended.
That's exactly correct, yes sir, yes sir, yes sir. Here is a, here is a copy of the 2006 Condition Report. We gave each roof section on the two buildings a rating. Either it was failed, it needed immediate replacement, you were taking on water at that time. It was, we projected it had roughly a three, five-year life expectancy, a five to seven or a 10 to 12, either poor, fair, or good. And the one thing I want to preface is that, in our industry in roof analysis, there's no planned obsolescence in a roof. Some will last longer, some will not. Sometimes with routine maintenance, we can extend the life, sometimes you don't get to, and certain things happen in terms of, the system will age quicker, depending if it was a hot summer that summer. Things can happen relatively quickly, so, I just want to preface that, and I'll show you some of those things as we go through the presentation. So, here was the first roof replacement project we did in 2006. It was a combination of, that was proposed, I should say, and it was bid out, were these roof systems at the elementary school and those over here on the far south end of the building here at the senior high. One note is that this section was, because of budgets, the gymnasium section right here was pulled, and then it was picked up again and done in 2008, okay? So, I'm gonna show you real quick. Here were the original detailed drawings, again, this was a separate line item, it was not awarded in '06. And then, and this is the other part of the project that we did again on the south end. So, full replacement, the district had very inexpensive, short life expectancy, rough roof systems. The district at that time made the decision, it was time to stop that short life expectancy mentality, let's put something on the building that can last a long time, something that can be maintained as it ages. And so now consequently, a few of the photos I'm gonna show you here, this is the new roof that was going on in '06, and it was actually, and now we're going over to the high school, they were, now these roof systems have life expectancies, they're need of 40 years. Warranties are 30 years, no prorations, no limitations to the warranty in terms of dollar value of the warranty. And at the end of the warranty, the original warranty, which is 30 years, the district has the option of doing a maintenance procedure to the roof and extending the original terms of the warranty. So, they made a commitment at that time to say, let's put something on the district, we're gonna have these buildings a very long time, let's get out of this routine of replacing roofs every 15 years, okay? Go ahead, Troy. So, I'm showing here is that, that there was a lot of ponding water on these original buildings. We still have that condition on some of the other areas that have not been replaced yet. We took, this was, and this used to be a real bad one, where in this corner, particularly, this roof drained in this corner when they did this addition, and it was a real sore spot for the district, they were constantly taking on water. I took this picture, as you can see in the rain, to show that we re-tapered those corners and all that water's going now. It does not pond any more water, which would just...
Where'd it go?
I'm sorry?
Where did it go?
We had a roof drain right there. And the roof drain, we did a combination of a roof drain, and can you go back one more? Smart one? These lines right here indicate, we also installed tapered insulation to move the water out of this corner, so in this far corner, we installed a new roof drain, new roof drain was installed there.
It must be a new roof drain, and that wasn't there before.
It was not there, that's correct. In fact, if you see right here on the original plan, new roof drain plumbing by others, your local plumber in town installed into plumbing, he installed that drain for us on that roof project. So now, we have no more water sitting on the roof, and so I took that picture to kind of show that, that really has now served the district very well, so. We came back then, in 2008, we did our replacement project in '08, district was having quite the time with the gymnasium roof. That was a roof, a very unique structure, and the district decided that it would be, it was a good structure to put standing seam steel on, so we actually retrofitted a substructure, framing structure on that building, to even get rid of even the low slope roof. So, a few of these pictures, here's the substructure being installed up on that building now. Everything was load point calculated as far as transferring the weight of this life weight framing system down to the structure inside the gym, and here are the new panels coming on the gym now. And then here's kind of a rough, towards the unfinished shot of that structure as we see today. Probably the last roof the district ever put on the building. Literally, there's nothing to sit on the roof. The steel coating is warranted for 30 years, leave warranty for 30 years. It had a long outlast, long outlast that warranty in terms of its coating and its watertightness, so. I'm gonna jump back and just revert, just for a second, so again, going back to the '06 original condition report, we had the failed, which was the red. Now, we did everything except for this one, the district at the time did not have the funds to do this section over here at the elementary school. So we took care of the red at the high school, our immediate need, and between '06 and '08, we took care of this end of the elementary school. So then that left us next to deal with the three to five year sections along with this remaining section that did not get done at that time. And so we gave a budget, '09 through '13, of those roof areas. So here we were, we picked up, we named that number one because it was leftover, and then we moved over to the high school, the gym, classroom, cafeteria sections, and this section here, again, at that time, was our lowest priority, and again, that was not done, it was because of budget constraints, it was left out, but we did do everything but that area, and that's why today, you still see that as now your immediate need. So what we did is, we did do some repairs to it, at that time back in '09, when this larger project occurred and happened, so, go ahead, Troy, and go through those. So here are some photos of the 2009 replacement here at the high school, all new wood perimeters were installed around the entire head, the old wood nailers were rotted out, they were in really bad shape, they take, they leaked for a long, long time, which is not uncommon of an aged roof system, so all new wood nailers were installed. And then here's the new roof system being installed again, we're working around the gym, this is right at the north end, right off the front main entrance of the school here. And now we're actually up on the gymnasium, and you can see here, these are the sections over here, cafeteria, kitchen area right here, that were done as well. And all new metal, only perimeter metal was put on the walls. The one thing I want to point out here is, you can see the height difference between this step down right here, and you can see the roof actually sloping, we added tapered insulation, again, to move all the water and get it off the roof as quick as we can. So, these roofs, we never had a leak call back since, through the warranty, these roofs have served the district very well so far in aging, just as we would hope they would, so. Okay, here are some more photos up front, so again, again, you see in the far back, here was our '06 project that we originally did, these are those two sections that got left out, that were eliminated because of budget, and then here were the sections that we ended up replacing again. So again, here we are, 2010, kind of flies in our business, because we do these in cycles, so to speak, and so, if you remember, we left this project out because it was for budgeting. So here we were in 2010, and we gave this budget, and we now come back and just run some annual inspections with Donnie, continue to walk them, do preventive maintenance, and just try to hold on and keep these things as watertight as we can as we age, okay? So what I'm gonna show you now is our 2013, what we found this year, this fall, as we stand right now, okay? These two sections are those two red areas that are on your map, okay? The section that we are identifying, again, back in 2010, as needing to be replaced sometime between 11 and 12, is what our recommendation was. What you're seeing here is, a couple things I want to point out. This is a fall day, I think this was, what is, late October, early November we did this time?
November.
November. There's no, there's no snow on the ground yet, you can see the green grass, the courtyard. What you're seeing here is, it was probably nine o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning, this frost on the roof is what this is, okay? What you're seeing here is, one of the reasons we recommend replacement of these roof systems, is that, in this photo along with several of the others, really show the conditions that you're facing on this building right now. This is heat loss through the building, okay, energy loss. The little round circles, those are the fasteners holding the insulation down. The insulation, these lines, these are the lines of the insulation of the boards. What's happened is, as the insulation has aged, it shrinks, so now it's revealing its insulation boards. The other thing is, when this roof was put on, they didn't stagger the insulation boards, they stacked them all up in a nice straight line from the first layer up. So we had this heat loss going right through the, literally right through the roof, and you're seeing a picture of it right now, okay?
Now, and that one, is it going all the way across that one, and the white one on the other side?
Yeah, in fact, exactly, you can see...
The rocks are what you replaced.
That, oh, here's what we replaced, in fact, you can see it right here, this is the section back here we replaced as well, see it? Now, that's a very, very good point. One thing I'll add is that when we replaced those roofs by building code today, we were required to add insulation, because the energy code requires us to bring these roofs up to code, just like you went in your house, add insulation to your attic, building code requires us to add insulation to the roof. So we added insulation, and staggered the joints by the way, so that's why we have no heat loss, that's why you go up on this roof, there's no frost on the roof, right? So, these are under insulated, insulation joints did not stagger, making lots of heat loss in the roofs. So when the day comes that these do get replaced, hopefully sooner than later, we will do the same, we'll upgrade the insulation levels, so we don't have any heat loss to the roof. As we move around the perimeter of that roof section, we start to see shrinkage and tearing, it's hard to tell, you'll see it in the next slide, but watch this spot right here, when we found this spot right here, go ahead, Troy. This is actually torn wide open, looking into the building. What happens to this roof system, as it ages, and this is literally the material that's up on that roof, the sun dries it and it shrinks, that's how, that's how it ages, and that's how it deteriorates. It literally shrinks, and it pulls and it tears. So the dilemma is, is, can you patch the roof? Yeah, you can patch the roof. Well, we patched this roof in '06, patched the roof in '09. Patched the roof now... Patched the roof now in '13. We had, we had to patch this here just this fall, all right? Because, here the dilemma is this, as you look at that sample coming across you, across the table, the membrane gets dirty and as it ages, it gets almost next to impossible to get a patch to stick to as it ages. It loses its physical characteristics, and patching becomes difficult. Can you do it, can you buy a little time? Yep, you can, but it's minimal, there's no return on your investment, it's very minimal return. So we ended up having to replace, do a bunch of patching and replacing. So that was these two roofs down here. Now, the next ones we're going to show you are the purple that, again, back in 2010, we were recommending a five to seven year. So we were suggesting sometime around 2015, 2017, you should be replacing this all this purple, okay? So here's what we're finding now.
When we ask the questions, you want to ask the questions for the roofs you're talking about, or wait till the end of the question?
You ask them whenever you'd like, sir.
Okay, the pink area down there, if you were showing the gymnasium roof, that would never have to be placed again, probably?
Yes, sir.
So what's the difference in the steel price compared to, like, an area like that? Got the courtyard on one side, a single sloping roof, could you put steel on there instead? And make it coordinate with the roof so it looks better than that white one? Not, no offense to it, really, but I...
Can you do it, yes. Here are the limitations. Limitations are this. There are, there were one structural limitations, not so much worried about that just because we know enough, we have enough history on this building to know that structurally you can probably take it no problem. It becomes two issues. It becomes, one, a drainage issue, where do you send the water, okay? Now, most of these roof systems have water going to internal roof drains, okay? When we slope this with the steel, that has to go to a gutter, into a downspout, over the edge of the building. Now, there are some sections on this building that are perfect for that exact scenario. So for example, when the day comes that you have to do this gym, there's hardly any rooftop equipment for Donnie's guys to go up there and service. We could easily slope this so that the water goes down one of the adjacent roof drains, and not send water over the building. Perfect, perfect spot for it. The dilemma you'd have here is, where do we send the water without running it over the roof edge? Don't really have that option here. Not that it couldn't be done, but you'd have to be willing to accept water either going into the courtyard, or water coming off over on the sidewalk side of the building, which isn't always a very good idea. Second thing is, you can't ignore the aesthetic or the architecture of the building. Now, again, our experience is, higher locations, gyms, penthouses, they're perfect. These down here, I think it might be a little awkward all of a sudden drive up there and look across the profile of this building and see this lone standing seam steel roof sitting up there, and everything else is flat around it. It might look a little awkward. I'm not saying people haven't done it, and you can't do it. It would just be a consideration I need to look at. So we're going to look at, we're going to look at all the purple, okay? That we're projecting, starting next year, between next year and 2017. Again, heat loss is really prevalent, okay? This is a condition of these roofs. These roofs were installed in the early to mid 90s. They are quickly coming to the end of their life expectancy, you're about to see why. When, again, when these are replaced, they will be required to be added, come up to the building code for R value for insulation. We will bury these fastener heads in that insulation so we have no more heat loss through the fastener head. There's a real concern on these types of roof systems.
I remember when that was replaced.
Yes, sir.
In the 90s, but why didn't they do that at that time?
It was probably...
Wasn't, it didn't need to be code at that time, or this particular code?
They actually, the R value, there was the code at that time. So at that time you were at the code. It's strictly a cost. They could have done it. It would have required an additional layer of fiber board, do you have it? It would have required an additional layer of this board right here to be installed on top of it. Now, the dilemma at that time would have been, how do they attach that board to this insulation, given that they were putting a rubber roof on it? And the rubber roof had no hot asphalt on the job. It would have required a very expensive adhesive to do at that time. And that's, a lot of mine is cost.
Wasn't any question about asbestos?
No, no, that was not an issue at all. No, it was strictly, that was strictly the cost.
And what about the structural, the weight?
This is a very light system, this is a very, very light system. This roof system, based on that insulation that's there, four to five pounds per square foot, very light, very light, yeah. So we're going to go through and show you how this system has now aged. I can walk you right around the hallways of this building and show you how this roof system is starting to let water kind of seep in through the perimeters. First place any roof will fail is a projection coming through the middle of it or around its perimeter. That's its weakest point, and that's where they fail first, okay? So we're going to show you, there's quite a few locations where we're seeing water that is staining tile. And it's really starting to prove the point that probably weren't too far off when we said 2015 to 2017, these things got to go. So, this is in the media center. And this was in the classrooms, the office just inside the media center, trying to keep water off the television. Okay, now, this is actually one of the conditions that we found, where the roof had actually sloped out and opened. And what we want, what we're pointing out there is, when this roof was installed, they actually covered up a detail of how the wall drains. We looked in the original detail plans and detail drawings. This brick wall, as this brick wall drains, it soaks up water in a rainstorm. The water runs behind the brick and is supposed to weep out above the roof. The problem was, they covered up the weeps when they put this roof on. Very, very common shortcut error that happens when no one's watching our roofing contractor install a roof.
There's a detail right there.
Oh, and there's the detail. This is what the detail should look like, you should see these weeps. These are ropes. This is how this wall drains out. Now, if you go to the next slide, you don't see them. They covered them up. So literally what's happening is when the wall soaks up water, it's running down the building and can't weep out where it's supposed to. So, we've got to correct that. And quite honestly, believe it or not, it's a condition we correct quite often in a re-roof job. What I'm going to point out now is, you're going to start to see, imagine taking two pieces of, if anybody's fixed an inner tube tire anymore, if they even have an inner tube tires anymore, you used to clean that rubber and glue it together, and literally have a lap. And it's held together by adhesive, glue, right? So you clean it, glue it, and let it water, see if it can air mold. That's how these roofs are put together, basically. So what we're going to start to see as we go through these slides here, is you're going to start to see the adhesive's starting to peel up and the laps are all starting to come apart, water in the building, okay? So go ahead, Trey.
You know, get back to those weeps, you know, just real quick, like?
Yes, sir.
How come the building inspector didn't catch that?
It's not a building inspector, believe it or not, it's a building inspector, it's not co-compliance issue.
A lot of them don't even know.
And a lot of them don't even know to catch it. Nope, I don't know, it happens every day, believe it or not. And it happens more, let me back up. In a re-roof application, up until about five, six years ago, in outstate Minnesota, we work in-state, outstate. Outstate Minnesota, unless you had a local building authority in your town, there's no, there were no inspections on these.
Or that.
And that's one of the dilemmas. Now, that has changed now today. Today, when we permit a project today, now it goes to the state of Minnesota. They check the R values, they check the details, they check co-compliance, they make a review and comment. They get it back to us, we have to comply. You know, there's a process there now today. But it still happens. Because in reality, even the building inspectors, they're not looking for things like that, to be quite frank, early on. So here we're starting to see, here's the laps and the adhesives. All these open, starting to come unattached. So we had a lot of these areas we had to repair this fall, okay? Here are the corners around the projections. They're literally laying up like this, okay? And here's kind of a close-up showing you how, they're all kind of curled up, corners are all curled. We're just coming to the end of the life of this roof. I mean, I don't know the way to tell you that. It's almost 20 years old, which is the design life of the system. So it's time to stop repairing, this is coming for you. And then we start to see on the shrinkage, this is actually taken on the '08? No, '01. Oh, I'm sorry, '01 section. Where, down on the north end of the building, where we started to see the rubber, and this happened, this shrinkage and this, this happened, this showed up and appeared like this in about the last nine months.
That's over the cardio roof.
Yeah. Okay? So these were just blatant holes. Here, because what you're seeing here, there's a hole here, a hole here, a hole there. Everywhere they nailed it, because the rubber has shrunk, and it's pulling from the nail. Okay? And then right here, it just, it literally pulled out from the metal, so. This is up on the, up on the gym, right behind, up on the north end?
Yeah, the tory.
Ah, tory, I'm sorry. Now, we don't have these projected, and again, back in 2010 for eight to 10 more years. But look, what's starting to happen. They're not there yet, they're not there yet. We've got some life to get out of them, we don't need to replace these right away. Look, what's starting to happen, here it comes, okay? So, I guess the point of our message tonight is, we can, you know, we see, it's easy to see this coming, you just have to plan accordingly, okay? So, so that brings us back to, again, where we were in 2010, the budget we had presented at that time. We see your immediate need, and I think we've probably shown the photos to support that. Your immediate need right there. Roughly $120,000 is our budget to replace those two roof systems. And then we see a project coming, five to seven years. All roughly $1.3 to $1.4 million would take care of those. And then after that, would be the yellow, eight to 10 years. I didn't provide a budget for that at that time. Projecting out that far, it can be a crapshoot with oil costs, labor costs, who knows? I mean, if anybody can predict that, I'd like to go to casino with you, so. Now, today, maybe we could get a little closer today, so. Questions?
That 2010 adjustment, has that changed in 2014?
I would, I would like the opportunity to possibly, inflationary factors and market conditions, just take a small adjustment to it. Say round number, but I, yeah, I'd like, and we're bidding out, we've already bid out this year already in 2014, we've already bid out about four or five projects. And those bids will be coming in the next 30 days. It gives a really good chance to just kind of do some comparisons and kind of firm those up.
Is the warranty the same on the steel roof versus the flat roof?
Depends on which flat roof it is, it can be. The roofs, so these systems in '06 to the steel roof there, and all these '09s, they are the same warranty. 30 years, end to end, no prorations, no shocking exclusions. These roof systems, the rubber roof systems, depending on which type you put on, and how it's installed, and what you use for insulation, they'll range from 10 to 20 years, is what those warranties will range from. You can even, you can pay to extend them. The reality is you don't improve the life expectancy very much, but you, it's about 10 to 20 years is what you see. And I, and I would preface that, you know, when the decision is made to put these types of roofs on, warranty's an important factor, it shouldn't be the factor. We tell people, the best warranty you ever have is the one you never have to use. And don't buy it because of just the warranty. Warranty's there as a secondary. Buy it because it has good solid design backup, like the tapered insulation, get the water off the roof, multi ply construction where it's durable. Donnie's guys can walk up on that roof, he can take a mechanical contractor up there, they can take your equipment and tool chest and drop it on the roof, and they're not going to touch it. He can't do that. And we've already had to refix that on these roofs. They have to walk on these roofs with slippers. If they drop any of those pliers, it will rip through the system, it'll cut it. It's only 45 mil thick, it's only thick as a rubber band. So the other, these new roofs that we've been putting on and installing, very thick, very multi ply, literally, they could drive on if they had to, which is what you should expect out of a commercial building. So, it costs a little bit more, but boy, you reap the benefits, don't we?
Like, how much more, is this a 10, 15% deal?
I'd say 20, yeah, 40.
Steel versus the flat roof, cost wise?
Depends on the substructure you get into. If I had to average a number, I feel like 10%?
Or?
For the steel versus the lower slope built up systems? You know, probably 10%? Just depends how elaborate you have to get with the substructure in that framing system. That was a pretty elaborate one over at the, at the elementary school. It was pretty complex, the way it drained and the way the structure was sloped. It had a lot of contour to it, so the framing system, it was pretty integral. So it took a little bit more dollars to create that. But you definitely have some applications here that are very susceptible to that system. Thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
That was just strictly informational. They had come out and presented it to me, and I thought it would be an interesting presentation to both board and committee. So it's just an informational piece at this time, I think, as we started talking facility. Certainly, I think it'll be something that I would bring them back out and have them be with anybody that we need to do. But I think that would be a job for the facility committee and recognition from that point.
Okay. Next, if we're going to consider the following school board organization and committee...
Just a couple pieces. I did leave two things on, the committee representatives that we had taken off before, and I put it back on just to make sure, if we decide to take them off again, then next time when you see this in another year, then they'll be completely gone. One would be E, which would be the employee recognition committee. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, right? Yep, I think we've had a board member or two in the past that have just done this. So I think when we took this off for last year, it was because it was being done and it didn't feel like, no district dollars are used for it. So we had taken it off. So I guess I'd like to know if that's still the desire of the board?
I think it makes the most sense because, like I said, it's not school dollars.
Nothing is done through staff dollars or district dollars. So if that's right, I'll remove that kind of permanently, and we will not put representatives on. The other one was the active booster club, I think that was in place at one time and is no longer functioning.
Yep.
So with permission of the board, I will drop those for future times, unless for some reason they come up and we need to do that. Other than that, we just need to go through and kind of go through each one and get representatives from the board on those committees and organization representatives.
Well, I will start with A.
Yep, so, and I think we did present to the board, you do have this from this year in your packet, so that you know who are on there. Right now, I believe for Minnesota High School League, it's really Cheryl, I was on there right now.
And I would like to stay on in the class.
Up to the board.
So, how do you want to handle this?
I think we just go through it, if somebody wants to take it, that's fine. I don't think you need to make a motion for each individual one.
Anybody else looking at that one? Okay, next would be the, is that, is that for both? Because we have the Minnesota State High School League, more representative, and, oh, and you're the administration representative?
That's what he...
Max. Okay.
He doesn't get any checks.
Okay, so then we've got schools for equity and education.
I can say that Deb is a board member on that organization.
I'm on the executive board on that committee.
You're okay with that?
So I would like to stay on, yes.
Anybody, any other thoughts? Okay, Stearns County Family Services. Okay, Stearns County Family Services Collaborative.
I would like to stay on that committee.
Okay, Kella?
Kella, I was on as alternate.
Do you want to come?
Yeah, would you let me know in the meetings, I sure... I would like to get up to speed. Thank you.
And I hope if somebody, we're kind of electing all the same people here, or finding all the same people, if somebody has something to say, got to speak up, obviously.
Yeah, you just do need to mention that. If you're interested in that, certainly, there's some good benefit to having it in some times.
Legislative liaison rep. Yep, that looks like it's you.
Yeah, and there's certainly not, I guess that just kind of falls me. You get a lot of, most of the stuff goes directly to you guys now anyway, through emails and whatever, but... There was a time when it did work that way. I think just about, I can't think of anything that you don't get through the email. Every once in a while, something from C committee will come out or the delegate assembly that will have, but, so...
And a lot of times when they're looking for other people to come to legislature and speak, you guys do get emails from...
Yes, that kind of...
From me or from C that would say that we need more support. Or requests from me that says, great town, somebody at this meeting.
Okay, you okay with that, Deb?
Yep.
Okay. And next is West Central Education District Representative and Alternate. Looks like it was Lou Starcamp and David Johnson.
Yeah, I want to stay on that.
Okay?
Then I would be going to be an alternate.
Okay, continuing education. Kella?
I can stay on that.
Okay. And then Community Education Advisory Committee was me.
I would be interested in that position if Bruce is willing to step down.
No offense, I've been on there very long, but your meetings are really low organized. I think it'd be very interesting for you to show. Curriculum advisor, advisory committee, that's me. Personally, I'd probably like to stick with that. We have one meeting just to kind of lay things out. If I, or do you want me out of there to ask too many questions? I guess I'd like to stay with that one.
I do think that committee has world's best workforce. Stuff comes on and I'll bring that to the board at one of these meetings coming up so that you have a better understanding of what it is. And I'm assuming that even at our leadership workshop coming up the next couple days, I would also be encouraging board members to, if one of those is on there for the world's best workforce legislation, I'll really be encouraging the board on, we've been asked there, we'll see that. So that will be coming there and I think that committee will become more and more a part of that piece as things shake out.
In the states bill that they wrote last summer, they talked about, a lot about the state's workforce.
World's best workforce is what that...
That's what they're trying to... Because I read, when I read that bill, it was in there quite a bit.
Yep, it is. And it's really about communicating with the public more and that particular committee would be part of that.
Then we have the facility and equipment, which presently is Deb Lenz, Lou Starcamp and myself. I'd like to stay. You would like to stay?
Sure.
Deb, you'd like to stay? I feel like we should be kind of asking okay or not, so, again, before you've got a desire down here, you're trying to say something.
Certainly want to get the people to agree.
Yep. Transportation, we have David Johnson and Lou Starcamp with the alternate being Cheryl. David, you're staying?
I'd like to stay there also.
And I would just remind the board that our agreement with transportation is for one year, so kind of as we start to finish, hopefully some of our other negotiation pieces up, we're going to be coming back to transportation again.
Okay, then we get to the negotiations committee. We have the teachers' negotiation committee, which is David Johnson presently, Lou Starcamp and myself.
Seems to make sense that we should just keep these go on.
I would think, we're in the middle of all of these. Anybody have any objections if we keep the negotiations committees the same?
None here.
Is that okay?
It would be helpful to me.
Yep, because then we don't have to redo anything here. Meet and confer, Steph Lenz and Cheryl.
What are we supposed to do?
Well, really, to meet and confer, so if the teaching staff has an issue that they want to talk about, certainly would be part of that meeting, confer meeting. Right now, I'm grateful that the only thing that we've really had to meet and confer about is our calendar each year. And that's an annual meeting that we just sit down. I've met with them once, I'll be calling another meeting to make sure who the representatives are. Certainly want to attend that. You can do it, but I think that's the only thing that we've had to kind of meet and put over.
Are you two okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, and staff development, we have Deb Lenz presently.
That's probably one of my favorite ones.
Well, hearing nobody stepping in on that one, I have to do. Budget and finance is Mark Dingman, David Johnson and Lou Starcamp.
Should say...
Can we assume Mark for the state?
Mark said that he is, when I talked with him before the meeting, he said wherever the board would like him to be a part of, he is fine.
That was open-ended.
That's what I told him. He told me I'd pay a price if I used that.
I would think of district, but the same makes sense at this point. District-wide technology committee is Mark. Leave him there. Wellness committee is Deb Lenz presently. You okay with that one?
Yeah, I'll stay hoping that they do start meeting again.
Okay. And then we have athletic committee, which is David Johnson and Lou Starcamp presently.
What does the athletic committee do?
Okay.
What does the athletic committee do?
My account is about the max, max clearance.
Okay. Policy committee is Mark Dingman, myself and Cheryl. And I'm interested in staying on that, Bruce is on that. If I could speak for Mark, I'd like him on there. I do have to say that with some of the policy things, we had some really good ideas. We were three people coming from totally three different areas and I think your best decision is made that way. Okay, and we want, they said board of...
Yeah, but you should make a motion to...
We have a motion to accept the new committees.
So...
Moved by Cheryl, a motion by Cheryl, second by Kella?
And it'd be the committee and organization representatives.
Okay, committee and organization representatives. All in favor? I'll both by saying aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Okay, passed. Review and consider designating the official meeting day and time for regular in order of education director meetings during the 2014 calendar year.
You have exhibit B, which is a corresponding date to this year's to start the discussion.
I noted that you have two PM on the dates.
That's just where we started last year. This year, we did move it up to 1 PM. I'm fine with that to give us more time, but we didn't start with what we had originally proposed for this year, so...
I would like to propose moving those both to 1 PM. It makes it easier for the students, if it's okay with the rest of the board.
I'm okay with it. Myself, it seemed like when the kids were resting at home, it would just kind of mad rush and...
I would agree.
So...
It'd be the May 6th and the December 1st.
At this point, we'll look at, if we accept this whole thing, we can accept it with the 1 o'clock time.
Yep. The other piece that you need to talk about is the starting time.